Testing, testing.
Test, test.
Testing.
It's no worries. We can find it. I've got more of those that comes to that, so it's not.
That was the traffic coming over.
So Anders is going to be late. We have Maurice here. Do we know where Gina is? Be late. Do we have any idea where Gina is? Pardon me. I'll wing it. Good afternoon and welcome to the continuation of Millbrae's special council meeting on goal setting. This was continued from Saturday, May 6th, and we're bringing it back today. Just a couple points of order. We have a regular council meeting tonight, and we will be stopping, a hard stop, at 6:30 so that council member and staff can get something to eat and drink before we start the 7 o'clock council meeting. For members of the public, it is lovely to see you here, both in person and online. Because this is our second of what's going to be a series of goal settings, we are limiting public comment and council comment, hopefully, to one minute on that. And we're not voting on anything. It's not a done deal tonight. But if you could please try to make your comments specific to each strategic initiative. So you'll notice that if I get public slips or the city clerk gets somebody online, we're going to try to funnel you to strategic initiative number four, number five, number six. And if anybody has comments on one, two, and three, we will be coming back to a future goal setting. We'll be continuing this to another date because there's no way we can do three initiatives in an hour and a half. So we know, I know one minute is not very long, but if you can get to your point, we can capture your thoughts on that. And with that, I would also just give all of council member and the public know that goal setting as a function is to help support or drive what we put into our city budget. Our last agenda item tonight at the regular council meeting is the budget meeting, and you can see how what we're working on in goal setting will fit into budget. But I ask council members, please, when we're working on things that they are somewhat, and Kathy, go into more detail, measurable and funding. We won't be able to fund everything. So if we can kind of focus on that and figure out, and if some things have already been taken care of or are part of an ongoing current project, maybe we can still get our cake and eaten too. And we are, Councilman Fung is caught in traffic. He will be joining us, and I'm sure Councilwoman Papin is on her way. With that, I am going to turn it over to the city manager, and I am just a council member now except for calling the slips.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you and members of the city council. Tom Williams, city manager. And just clarification, it was actually his vehicle was broken down. So that's really why he wasn't here on the excuse absence. So I don't have anything other than to say than, you know, just continuation, as you mentioned, Mayor, and I'll hand it over to our consultant to take you through strategic initiatives four, five, and six, and see where we land. So Kathy?
Very much, Tom. I'd like to just, for those of you that were not here on Saturday.
Hey Kathy, sorry, that microphone needs to, yeah, it's, uh...
Hello?
No.
Hello, hello? Hello?
There you go.
Hello, hello. We'll try. Just, somebody wave their hand at me. It's not coming through. Please. Okay, I just like a reminder is that we need to think about our conversation with the principles of conversation, which is, please, listen with respect for all voices. Don't interrupt. We, you all were really good on Saturday, but there was a little interruption. We want to try to keep that down because what happens when we interrupt is our brain is working very fast for what we want to say next. So we're not really listening to what the person has to say. To the point, there was a lot of repetitive, a lot of repetitive comments on Saturday. We're going to try to really, very efficient tonight. So if you would please make your comments and keep them short. The audience, our citizens, please fill out a form. We're only giving you one minute to state your points, so try to think it through ahead of time and be succinct. And I'm timing this. I'm timing the council as well. And three minutes limit, please. Try not to prejudge what someone is saying. Try to come from an open place and open mind. We all have biases that we're not aware of, so be open. That's it. Shall we get going?
I made a mistake. If the city clerk could please call the formal roll call, and then we'll do pledge of allegiance.
Councilmember Papin. Councilmember Cahalan.
Here.
Councilmember Fung. Vice Mayor Goodman.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Three members of the city council are present.
Thank you. And if ever you could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Kathy, now back to you.
Thank you so much. All right, we have going over here, I think it's whatever, the slide deck, is that correct? Just so you all know, we have a new slide deck in which the things that were going to be combined have been combined, and we will review those again as we go forward. They're up here. Okay, number four. Now, the council suggested to the city manager at the end of Saturday that they, that he look at each of these and see which ones could be combined. So these, initiative four, five, and six, have been combined in the way that it makes sense when you're doing the budget, so that things that will fit in more than one have been done. And that's very obviously advantageous because then you get several. So when you're voting, you get more bang for your buck. Okay, so the, the scope, so we're on the initiative city government and organizational success. Number one, review the scope. I'm not going to read all of this, but I'll just generalize it for you all. Review the scope of each committee and commission, modify, prepare public municipal code amendments to meet the city's demands, upgrade the committees to commissions, reading it after all, provide them email addresses and business cards. Seems like a small thing, but is important and real, and I'm not going to judge it. I don't know if it's important, but to some people it will be. Number two, remodel the council chamber for safety, technology upgrades, and modify overall floor plan to improve it. Number three, update the council protocols. Set the mayoral rotation based on districts, nepotism protocol or ordinance. Number four, review the central county fire department contract and pursue integration inclusion of Millbrae to the CCFD board. Number five, prepare and conduct fire assessment property vote for continuation of current fire assessment. It's set to expire in '24. Number six, conduct disaster preparedness day similar to November 19, including CPR, stop the bleed, first aid, et cetera. Number seven, host bicycle multimodal rodeo, intent date, second Saturday in October workshops. I'm sorry, I think it's partly me, but I think it's also the mic that is not coming through well. Link with update of e-bike rollout and get helmets for the children and adults. Number eight, implement implicit bias training for all city employees, committee members, and commissioners onboarding process, during their onboarding process. Number nine, community communications, message boards, real-time information. Number 10, home buyer assistance program for employees. And I believe that means, is that city employees? Yes. Number 11, multilingual access for all government meetings and resources. Number 12, BMR allocation ordinance, ensuring DEIA in distribution and allocation. Number 13, streamline permit tracking portal for planning and building. Okay, is that it for number four, initiative number four? Yes. All right. Let us, let's hear from each council member, please. You're allowed to pitch your best and your number one choice for up to three minutes. The shorter, the more we can get done tonight. Okay? Angelina, would you like to begin? Okay. Madam Mayor.
That was slightly different than we did Saturday. The public won't be aware that there was a death threat uttered in December, and we have been pursuing that. But the city council chambers need to be upgraded for the safety, both of elected officials as well as staff. You can see staff right now sitting with their backs against the wall. The cost of that will be greater than $50,000, so it is something that the city manager cannot do under his authority. And I think that, like the job of any city, our first job is public safety, including everybody in the room on a public safety issue. Thank you.
Very much. Gina, have you had time to...
I have not. I was curious, comment on nepotism?
Um, the clarification on nepotism, Kathy, if that's okay?
Yes, and I believe it was on the next, next page.
It's number three. It's number three. Millbrae has a history, actually, of having elected officials, family members on committees and commissions, which is unusual and can discourage other people from even thinking of applying. So it's something that the council should discuss, and it goes in with just how we operate as a city council.
Would you like to address one, Gina, or should we move to someone else?
Yeah. So I don't have a priority of one in particular, so I'll pass just for the sake of moving this along. Yes. Hello?
John?
Yeah.
You were going to say?
No, I said basically, I have no one that I'd like to champion, and so I'd like to move this on for the sake of time.
Yes. I think as I look at this, I feel like we have several kind of small things that are very doable rather than some lofty goals. So I think just a couple that are priority. I think this is new for us to have districts, and we really need to look at the mayoral rotation and set that new process, whether it's a protocol or an ordinance, so that we have really clear process moving forward into the future. And I think several of these community events and activities would be really successful for our community. And I think, looking at our committee and commissions as well, I think there's more empowerment we can do with those.
We're trying, we're going to try to keep it to just one. Okay, Gina, please.
Yes, I do want to emphasize, they're too real short. The accountability measures and schedules for city projects. Public does need to know what progress we are making past budgets every year. We have all these great things. We do our goal setting, and it's just, there's no way to follow when these things are inactive, what the timeline is for major projects. Number seven, and then, and are we going with three or four? I got four up here. Yeah. Number seven. Oh, sorry, changed on you. Just a minute.
Of course.
Okay, it's streamlined, uh, wait, wait, wait.
Was number seven consolidated with Saturday?
Are you talking about on strategic initiative four?
She's reading seven. She's reading four, seven from Saturday.
On strategic initiative three, but, but actually...
Okay.
Yeah, that's, she's on SI three.
Not looking at the old four.
Yeah.
Didn't move it over. If we, if we can...
Okay, I, so, yeah, so...
For four? Oh, and we can add it actually to, because I was going to suggest, the community communications, message board, real-time information. It really is along the lines of number nine, that I just want to make sure that we have in place accountability measures and schedules for city projects. Slip it in with number nine. Think somebody's going to owe me another drink for dropping off one of my items.
Okay, so we are adding to number nine accountability.
Well, I think it should be added for consideration, right? So if it's a priority.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
You mean separately?
Yeah, I think we need to add it as a number 14.
Okay. Accountability measures and schedules for city projects.
Okay, great. I think that perhaps, and we will revisit the whole thing after this. So I believe we should give the public a chance to speak before we...
Just from the public, we have a great deal of interest in number five. I do have one submittal that says three communication. That's Ms. Quong. Did you mean strategic initiative number three? I've got you for number five, but you had another card that just says three, and we're not doing three.
Oh, she just, public comments, three minutes.
Oh, public comments for items not on the agenda, which we did last Saturday. She's got it. Oh, for, this is number four. Do you want me to change that?
We're doing number four, this, this section right here.
Okay, okay. I've got it, Gina. I know how to read number three. So we have no public comments in writing. No, we're doing public comments on strategic initiative number four.
But we just talked about it.
And then I've got yours for number five, but we're doing number four right now. Public comments for number four.
The things that I read off right now. That's the fourth initiative. Then after the council votes, we'll move to number five and have people comment on it. Sorry, I probably didn't communicate that well.
So what's on the form is number three, and we don't have a number three. Did you mean number four, in which?
As I, as I hear her saying, I think she, last week we did, or any meeting that we have, we have public comment on items that are not on the agenda, and she's saying three-minute comment.
This is for council meeting at 7 o'clock. Okay, got it, got it. Thank you. Okay, so we have no public comment in writing. City clerk, do we have anybody on Zoom or on the phone?
Currently, there's no hands raised for this item.
Okay, closing public comment for strategic initiative number four.
For those of you that were not here on Saturday, the way that we're doing this, we're trying to get, we started with, I believe, 85 suggested goals for everything, for our six initiatives. Trying to get it down to 14 or 15, and that's hard. But good group here. Did that last Saturday, and we'll revisit everything. Right now, we're voting just what we read right here. So the council is going to vote for their first choice, and they get three points. For their second choice, they get two points. For their third choice, they get one point. So the first, so they're putting a green tag on one of these for their first choice, a blue tag for their second, and a yellow tag for their third. And we'll add it up, but we may not add it up until our missing council person gets here, or it may be another meeting until they can add up the choices.
This is, um, wanted to, it's up to the council, but I'd like to add one more thing that just was brought to my mind as this last, these were my notes from last week. Can we add for consideration a number 15, norm setting, meeting decorum, and trust building? Can put it as council development, but Chris?
Hey, could you, Maurice, could you say that again for me?
Council development, norm setting, meeting decorum, and trust building?
I think we have, yeah, conduct guidelines, do we not? City, I haven't seen them in a while, maybe they're there, but code of conduct for council members, I believe, not?
We have adopted protocols, but this may be different.
And I don't have them. No, I mean, I think having the protocols is one thing, but I think actually having some type of activity similar to this, where we come together and work on norm setting, expectations, meeting decorum, and trust building.
Yeah, and I, and I do think that's different than the adopted protocols. There is decorum in the protocols, but I think this council development, trust building.
All I have written is council decorum and norm setting?
That's fine.
Is that enough?
Yeah.
Great. All right, vote away, you all.
Well, I would just add to 15. Also, I think it's important.
Yes, you did.
But council development.
I had that in, but the vice mayor said council development, norm setting, meeting decorum, trust building.
Yeah, I just want council development added. There we go.
And for the record, number 11, the access to all government meetings, multilingual. I believe we already did that, so that has been implemented. If we're not discussing it right now, please know that was done. We're very proud of that, too.
For those of you that were not able to come on Saturday for the beginning of this process, our city manager made a presentation on all the accomplishments for the, for the past year, and in, we will revisit those at the end of this goal setting to see which ones were unfunded, that we want to put them back in in some way, or put them on a parking lot for three years from now. We will also look at those that are works in progress, that have started and need funding to continue. Okay, so I am not going to add these. Everybody basically gets six points, but Mr. Councilman Fung is not here, and I think that we've decided to wait for him, and we'll save some time and do it at the, when he is here. Okay? Everyone all right with that? We're going to, everybody okay? All right, so let's move on to SI five, fiscal sustainability and economic development. And you all can see this, it's not really facing you. So I probably will read most of it. Create, number one, create empty storefront ordinance and front window facade ordinance. That's been on hold as we awaited the business improvement district, but that didn't get votes. So let's move forward on the ordinance, and then property owners can see how the BID would help achieve livelier and more profitable downtown. And, and just so you know, if you were not here before, all of these goals, wish list goals... And just so you know, if you were not here before, all of these goals, wish list goals, come from the city council. These are things they worked on, and that's why there are so many, because everyone has something that they would, they and their constituents would like to see in the budget and happening. Okay? Number two, pursue downtown business association, advocating for downtown and business improvement district. Number three, create empty home ordinance. That is not for homes in probate, but for homes purchased as a second home and left empty most or much of the year. Empty homes become fire dangers and bring down neighborhoods, reducing revenue for local businesses in the city, and puts more pressure to build yet more housing rather than commercial developments that the city needs for a balanced budget. Number four, pilot at least one RFP for a city parking lot along the El Camino and downtown specific plan area. Preferable mixed use with parking below ground or inside the building. It's a chance to test out the use of shared parking between tenants of buildings and shoppers. Number five, implement downtown paid parking, parking in lieu of fee and metering strategy. Number six, review business licenses, clarify what home businesses, delivery companies need to operate in the city. If our fees are well below nearby jurisdictions, consider a small fee increase. Number seven, streamline permit, tracking portal, planning, and building.
Famous.
Two more. Number eight, develop a plan to measure cut through traffic and approach CCG and MTC, State of California, for parity in road funding, including safety improvements like more visible crosswalks. Number nine, develop impact fees for public art, climate resiliency, and childcare. Number 10, hold BART accountable, regroup costs, recoup costs for emergency services, public works, life moves, loss of business revenue at Safeway and Walgreens, file legal actions ASAP. This is a public safety and public health issue. I think that's it. So who would like to speak first? Gina, please.
Yes, I did nine and 10, the impact fees, which I think we're behind on. Talked about them frequently, and I hope that we can move forward on them. Those are the impact fees. Number 10, we have also discussed, or at least I have campaigned on them multiple times here, is that we be reimbursed for our expenditures at BART. I think we have more than enough evidence showing amount of public safety response time, everything that's going on there. I do believe that there has been discussions that they may offer some financing as far as life move goes, but in order to move that along, I would hope that number 10 could be one of those priorities here, which I don't see, sorry. We had mentioned moving over the parking issues related to RVs and things like that early, another day, I believe it was supposed to be moved over to this issue, and I don't see it here.
The manager, isn't that where we thought it was in strategic initiative number three and was scored in strategic initiative?
Correct.
Number three?
Yes.
So it's been, it's on our list.
No, I agree that it should be moved over here as a better, better place for it.
I think the plan is to get through the strategic initiatives, then we're going to come back and look at all six and see if some of them need to be moved around, if they better fit somewhere.
Do you respect, I mentioned that it would be better.
Counsel, this is the first cut. So let me just, because this needs to be efficient. This is the first cut. It's up there under SI 3, and it was already voted on. You're going to have another, you know, another iteration, another iteration. We've got to take 85 goals and get them down to about 15. So there's going to be time to communicate and discuss. I think right now, if we can narrow it down, spend the time on what your priorities are, on what we still have in front of us, then we can go to the next round, and then the next round.
For example, if Anders was here, or since he's not here, maybe he won't change any of this, but you can clearly see that some of these things have no votes, and that we will remove them. But we can add and subtract by the final and have that discussion, and you're going to vote again on your vote, once we, once we winnow it down a bit. That make sense? That work for you?
I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Mayor. It doesn't work for me because it was dropped off altogether. So.
No, it wasn't dropped off, council member. It's right there.
Right here.
Look on SI 3, the very last one.
Okay, well, that doesn't help.
And it got, and it got five, five points.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. It's not on your PowerPoint that was sent.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Last night, yeah. I apologize.
You're all set, council? Yeah.
And if I were going to advocate for one, it would be a combination of one and two. That just, this is fiscal sustainability, economic development, creating a business improvement district actually would go a long way in moving that forward.
Yeah, I actually was looking at one and two as well. I think we're coming out of COVID. We are seeing changes in the retail world and what kinds of businesses are succeeding in storefronts, and I think to bring our businesses together and support them through that, I think this is the right time for that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I agree, one and two. Number three is actually along the same lines. Just for the public to understand, we do a census, and based on the census is where a lot of money comes in that funds a city. So if approximately 10% of our housing stock is sitting empty, and I'm not talking probate, and I'm not talking about people not having moved in yet, but homes that are being permanently left empty, that has a direct and immediate effect on our, on our revenue stream. It has an immediate effect on the money for fixing roads. It has an immediate effect on a number of other funding areas on that. And we need to be aware that a lot of our homes are being purchased by foreign investors because we're a safe place to pocket money, and that doesn't necessarily make us a community. So my priority is to bring families in. Let's get families into these homes. And other cities up in Canada have done this. Up in Oregon, they're doing this. In the East Bay, they are doing it. You can own a home, but if you're going to leave it empty, get a family in there, rent it out. Let's make sure we can house people.
Thank you. I have two comments. Gina, I believe you were first.
I was just noticing that under strategic initiative four, number 13 is repeated under initiative five as number seven. Streamline permit, tracking portal, planning, and building. So we should probably just have it on one or the other. Number 13 and number seven, it's almost identical wording.
Well, and if anyone wants to vote for this again, we could combine.
Okay.
Kathy, if I may, we talked about the process, because there's some that I put on here that are already in SI 1 through 3, and we're going to catch that in the next go around. We'll see that, for example, the East Side specific plan is in both one and two.
Yeah, and we had a request from another council member on those, and so we're verifying which one they wanted it under. So we'll be back at you in a few seconds.
We'll get to all of it. Yes, Gina.
If we've all done it, I have.
Gina has one comment.
Okay.
We're going to. We're on four, is that correct now? Or five?
Five.
Okay, because I got three different things going here. So excuse me. All right, so number five here, I, number one, I don't think we should, I totally am for a business improvement district. Create storefront ordinances and window ordinances. I believe we have a sign ordinance, and I think we may be overreaching in a time of, you know, difficult time for businesses. So I just want to point that out. Number two, the empty house ordinance, two, Millbrae is an amazing place. It is very, it's very difficult to afford a home here. We have great schools. I believe we may have no more, we're not San Francisco here. We probably have something like five homes that are unoccupied or in transition here. I think this is not a good idea. I think what would be better, I mean, because we have code enforcement, and I think if you ask code enforcement here, they oversee any homes that may be unoccupied at this time, but I do think that our city resources could be spent better with some of our other priorities here. I don't believe this city is anything like other cities. Don't think we have.
Running out of time.
Okay. So I would just say that I don't think the mayor's representation about a whole bunch of foreign purchases and empty homes is appropriate for this. That's all. Thank you.
Point of order, we weren't, we were intentionally not debating each other on points on that. So in terms of the 5% to 10%, I have checked with the county assessor, and in terms of foreign ownership, it's pretty commonly understood that we have a great deal of foreign ownership on there, and I can confirm it with a conversation with several developers at the Gateway Grand Opening. And in this conversation, they didn't understand what the impact is of an empty house to a community on that. And part of the process, if this becomes a goal, is to bring the discussion to city council and look at it. This is not saying it's a done ordinance. It's saying we're going to discuss it and look at it on there. So we're going to close on that one. Gina, we're not debating right now. That's what we all agreed to on that.
Great.
I have five public comments.
Did you put a public comment, or do you have a question?
Your, Ms. Kwong is in the list.
Do you have another one to add?
So opening for public comment, public because of, this is just the first go around, and there'll be opportunities, and it will come to a regular council meeting. Everyone is limited to one minute, and the first person is Jeff Lamont. One minute. That's how we did it on Saturday, one minute. There'll be other opportunities, but yeah, on strategic initiative number five, one minute.
Okay. Good evening, council. My name is Jeff Lamont. I grew up here in Millbrae, was a longtime resident, and I help a lot of families get their goal of homeownership and building generational wealth. So I would discourage the council from moving forward on this idea of a empty home ordinance. I would tend to concur with Gina Papin. I want to see the raw data. How many vacant homes do we have in a city of 23,000? I really doubt that it's 5% to 10%. I think it's probably a couple of homes. So that's my first point. The second point is, why should we utilize city staff resources for an issue that is not a crisis at this point? Code enforcement is the proper venue to deal with this issue. Additionally, as I see it, this would be a tax, depending on how it's written, and if it's a tax, it has to go before the residents in California as a ballot measure. So that's another point that I wanted to make. And then I also saw in the write-up some comments about we need more commercial because it's better for the city budget. You know, we have a housing crisis in this country, I mean, in this county, state. We have not been building enough housing for decades. Governor Newsom put out a goal of building a million units. We're building about 100,000.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Lamont, time's up. Thank you.
Homeownership is important. Thank you.
I would like to see complete West Side development, review all pending proposals, get shovels in the ground. Republic Gateway is open for business, and we're very excited about that, so we need to get more shovels in the, in the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colapietro. Nathan Chan, and Mr. Chan, while you're walking up there, I'll call you back again for number
Good evening, Millbrae City Council. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the goal number, the initiative number three. I think the vacancy discourse is very, very nuanced. I'm not entirely sure how we can guess how old the city will be able to determine the intentions of the property owners in terms of why the unit isn't occupied at the time. And I grew up in Vancouver, and I'm well aware of the extraordinary housing challenges there. And they did implement a vacancy tax, and it did put some homes back on the market, but ultimately, it did not solve the unaffordability challenges that the city is experiencing. As the previous speaker mentioned, this.
Oh, time.
Oh, wow, that was really short. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chan. I don't have the clock in front of me. City manager, I don't see the clock.
We will help her. We will notify you, mayor.
Okay, all right, my apologies.
Number one, I against that. First is against a purpose of property owner's right. Why to punish people not occupy the house? Or I hope our mayor changed the term of following us, okay? Here's United States. Democracy is everyone wants the entitlement to legally own their house, and the ownership should be legal, not following us. Change the term, okay? Don't discriminate following us. The third is, like, I calculate where me and my husband retire, I'm senior already. I'm happy, I'm senior. And minimum for household expense, I count, even I don't invite you for dinner, I don't pay my dinner, minimum include my property tax, I need to have about 8,000 before tax income to support my minimum expense. So a lot of the people get the house for subsidized, our retirement income. That's why people have a rental property.
Thank you, Ms. Kwong, that's time. Ms. Kwong, that's time.
One minute.
Ms. Kwong, that's time.
You are too powerful to tie us one minute. You talk more than one minute. One minute times six.
Ms. Kwong, please sit down.
This is mayor. Okay, you need to give him a second.
Ms. Kwong, please sit down.
Then you need to do more study. I believe.
Ms. Kwong, please sit down.
Over 30 years, I know how many houses.
Ms. Kwong, please sit down.
You need to do what all the trip and calculate one by one, how many houses.
City manager, we have a protocol. I would like you to enact the protocol. Next up is Tom, Tom, I think it's Hamatchek? Okay. No, we need you at the mic for the recording. Thank you. Oh, or did you want to pull your name? Okay.
I'm Tom Hanasek. I live at 10 Quarter Princessa, Millbrae, and I was just going to, a second, there's not much more to add than what Jeff Lamont said, so I don't need to speak anymore.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider and city council members. My name is Fernando Peña. I'm the Government Affairs Director at the San Mateo County Association Railtors. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on SI 5, number three, the empty home ordinance, or as we view it, a vacancy tax, because if it does go down this road, it will become a vacancy tax that punishes property owners for their unused homes and buildings. The intent to punish property owners will have a host of negative consequences that will undermine the ability for property owners to do business. This is not the time to tax residential and commercial property owners. Property values have been stifled by rising construction costs, utility costs, inflation, the high interest rate environment, working from home options for employees, COVID, and moratoriums. I urge the city council to vote no on SI 5, number three, in your goal setting, and to not direct staff to look into this matter any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peña. Marian Kwong. Marian Kwong.
Being a American citizen, we have right to own our property here. And then we shouldn't, you should not sacrifice the property owner's equity and then to, to, uh, to serve the others. I mean, you know, it's, it's a pride to own a home here. That was a childhood dream. Everybody work hard, buy a house, right? And also this state asked us to build ADU. Oh my goodness, there's how many ADUs out there now? So are you going to punish them as well too? A lot of it, you know, so a lot of people like me, I'm, but only property is to pass down to my children. So I may just buy something earlier enough with a lower cost, but then a pass on to them, okay? Because they may not be afforded. But I just want you to think it through carefully. Think about what this empty home house mean to you. Okay. I mean, are you serving the entire population 23,000? Or you're serving the small population of 100? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kwong. Okay. I have no more on paper. I do believe we have a couple on the, on the call.
We do have two public comments. The first one is Paul. I'm muting you now.
And Paul, if you could state your name, please.
Yes, uh, good afternoon. My name is Paul Bodro. I'm a real estate agent here. Uh, I've been serving the Millbrae and surrounding communities for over 10 years now. Two big concerns regarding, uh, initiative number three. Uh, number one, um, really I don't feel it's needed. I think, uh, more research has to be done on whether or not, um, those figures of five to 10% are accurate. I personally don't believe they are. And quickly I could probably do some research and have something for you tomorrow to prove that. Um, I'm also really concerned about the cost benefit analysis. What kind of cities are going to be used to implement, uh, this initiative and ordinance? And what kind of benefit are we going to get? It's not going to solve the housing crisis. What we need to do to solve the housing crisis is develop and develop, uh, smartly, uh, which I think the city council has been doing over the past years. And there's some exciting developments, uh, that I'm excited to see to come to fruition. But that's how we're going to solve this housing crisis, not, um, pointless ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
The next speaker is Jean-Joe. Please go ahead and mute yourself, Jean.
Uh, can you hear me? Okay. Can you hear me before you start my time, please?
Yes.
Okay. Um, good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. I prepared a lot, but, uh, to, uh, portion it down. My name is Jean-Joe. I've been living and working in Millbrae for almost 20 years and have been on the planning commission as well as a real estate broker. Um, I'd like to speak to, disrespectfully disagree with the proposal of the empty home ordinance. Um, I do believe that as, uh, council member Papin said, there, if there are concerns regarding landscaping or maintenance, that can be handled with code enforcement. More importantly, uh, the most importantly, um, it would protect such an ordinance would place unnecessary restrictions on the private property rights of homeowners. And, uh, in terms of thinking that it will provide more housing and free up space for commissioned development, that is, I believe that's misguided. The reading numbers that we need to build are far more, uh, than what would be solved by, uh, freeing up those typically empty homes. And I mainly most very concerned about the implications of what it would take to enforce this measure. I think that it would probably unnecessarily create more work, be unenforceable and do more harm than good.
Thank you, Ms. Jean.
Thank you.
Ms. Joe, sorry about that. Thank you. And the last one? Okay.
That's all.
We have no further. And Councilman Feng has joined us just on top for our very, um, I can't think of the right word. I, I think I have been schooled. I have heard the public. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I do, I disagree though. We're going to have to do more work on, the public needs to understand where our money comes from. And a lower population is hurting us. Thank you.
Okay. Um, would you all?
Mayor? So it looks like we did have one other person that just raised her hand. So just for, you know, to allow people to speak.
If they could please state their full name.
Um, his name is Joe Chin.
On Zoom, Joe Chin.
Chin. Hello? Can you hear me?
You're coming in great, Mr. Chan.
Okay. Hi, this is Joe Chan. I live in Millbrae for more than 23 years. I strongly oppose the empty home ordinance because it will take away the property owner's property rights. Property owner have the right to decide if they wanted to be as their house for a second third, like vacation house or for a period of time, they might need to, uh, work or move to some other area and they can leave that house empty without venting to the other people. Everybody know that Millbrae house is a high-end house. It's not always like easy to, uh, vending out for the money. And also it, anyway, is the property rights of the homeowner. We should not this encourage people by setting up this empty home ordinance. It will just hurt Millbrae more.
Thank you, Mr. Chan.
We all the speakers, previous speakers. Part of.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chan. Time's up.
Okay.
We, do we have anyone else, city clerk?
There's no other virtual speakers.
Well, like to vote on this?
We have a time stop at 6:30 with one more initiative. We're actually doing really well on time. Councilman Feng, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, I want to, I want to thank the public for a little waiting, a little car trouble earlier today. The car's still being towed as we speak. Um, so since we're already on SI five, can we just maybe perhaps proceed with SI five, finish all the voting and then we can come back in SI four later?
And, and would you like to advocate for the SI fives that you would, you, we were supposed to advocate for one? There's been some flexing on that?
Just add one thing here on SI five. As far as a business license goes here, having just gone through that entire process, this would be extremely beneficial if it streamlined that process. The fees I don't think are under because I just paid them. I think they're kind of expensive. But streamlining the process would be very beneficial because as it stands now, you need five different departments to sign off. And, um, coming in and doing that, if it was done online and you could pick it up after the fact, would be much more efficient.
That's something you put on your survey or?
Um, I hope so because there's too many different drafts here. My apologies if we did not.
Business licenses.
It's number four on five. I just wanted to really.
Are you on the older than new, councilwoman?
Uh, how many drafts do I have here? Really going nuts. It says original. Which one should we be on?
It should be on the one that we emailed earlier that. That's the way.
We got three different drafts here. My apologies.
Councilwoman is looking at SI five.
We went over that right at the beginning, but if you could find the revised version, it says May ninth.
Number six.
Number six. My apologies. So in order to be efficient here, I'd just like to express that point of view. Again, having just gotten, I do think we would all benefit by streamlining that process.
We're going to revisit all of these.
Okay. Fine.
Everyone has a one chance. Let's move ahead. So let's, all of you.
So, so councilman, did you, did, did councilman Feng now have a few minutes to catch his breath? And?
Your first.
Yeah. So I'll be real quick here. Um, so I put in the downtown pay parking and Lufy and metering strategy. Um, as we had, um, in the previous meeting, uh, formalized and established a parking authority and then expanded it throughout the entire city. We need to think strategically and how our future parking strategy needs to look like, both downtown as well as, um, just meter parking as well as residential parking moving forward. As we think about how, um, you know, we have some city-owned parking lot, how we can better utilize those city-owned resources. Uh, and then at the same time, coming up with a parking strategy that would be fitting of what's Millbrae need moving forward here. So I think that deserves, uh, a certain amount of attention. Uh, and the staff could possibly work on that, given the fact that the direction at which we go there's a lot of decision of establishing the parking authority throughout the entire city is to next step to implement these strategy. But I think that should be a strategic goal moving forward.
Thank you. And now I think we can begin the vote on number five.
Just for clarification. How is that different than what we're doing already? Is it different? And if so, could you explain where we're already moving towards the parking study?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. We do have a, um, comprehensive downtown parking study, um, that's currently being prepared. And we will bring, um, these strategies back to the city council actually as a result of that, um, work that's in progress.
So is this different or is it same? If we were to put a vote on this, would it be considered a wasted vote? Or do you think we're already?
I, I think, I think it's already included. I actually think we already have the work in progress. So I, I think it would be a wasted vote on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this, well, I guess, I, I guess the way of what you just basically said was this is already in the work. It's already in this part of the strategic goal moving forward in the next year. It does not require to be reemphasized. I just want to make sure we account for all this because as we proceed with all these discussions and set priorities and goal for our, our council here, um, is to dedicate staff time and resources to these strategic initiatives.
Yeah. And that's right. And that's a good, but that's where we're going to take these and narrow them way down because we have a lot in the pipeline that we're working on. And this, this being one of the major studies. Full-blown parking management plan, inventory implement, uh, parking in Lufys, meter parking, streetscape design that was recently adopted with the downtown specific plan.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just for your review, councilman. Green is three points. That's your first choice. Blue is two. Second choice. Yellow is one. Third choice. But let's vote, you all. All right, you all, let's add this up just so you know where we stand. And as we said earlier, all of these things will be revisited as we winnow down. We're going to bring back the original charts of the things that are in progress, the things that didn't have funding from last year. So. Four, five, six votes for number one. It was popular. Six, seven, eight, nine, 10 votes for number two. Number three, zero votes. Number four, three points. Number eight, two points. Number nine, six points. Number 10, three points. Now, because there are 10 of these, certainly we can take out the ones that have no votes. But we have number 10 has 10 points. Number nine has six. Number one has six. Those are our top three. We've got number four has three. Number 10 has three. We have the plan to measure the city cut through traffic. Want to leave all the ones on that.
Let's leave them on because number, number eight is actually in another strategic initiative as is a couple more of these there. And we'll catch them on the next round.
All right. So the ones that we'll remove for the purpose of this at this stage are those that have zero points. We did before. All right. Good job. Let's move on.
And again, just for the record and clarification, um, it is, number five is already in progress. Just for the record.
Okay. Initiative number six. There we go. Okay. Complete tree ordinance for the city and heritage trees with map. Complete urban forest inventory that includes health of existing trees and review trees that should be removed due, due to drought, insects and wind damage. And this, this initiative is all environmental stewardship. For number two, for one year, ask for volunteer homeowners so that each neighborhood can begin to restore and create urban forests. The goal is to plant with city support 500 new trees a year. Take the maintenance of street trees back. And in the long run, it is cheaper as it has been determined in Oakland and San Francisco. In other words, it's cheaper to plant the trees and take care of them. Use the tree people at Los Angeles as a model for watering care for trees with residents. Number three, annually set climate change reduction goals. Actions that reduce the creation of greenhouse gases. gases or reduce existing carbon in the atmosphere. Climate resiliency, adaptation goals, any specific actions to survive heat waves, floods, droughts, habitat creation for pollinators, other species that comprise our ecosystem. Cool roof ordinance and report on successes and any failures. Number four, fight, fight SFO plans to fill in five acres of mud flats along the bay at Millbrae and other actions that ignore nature-based solutions over the increases of hardscaping, which will increase noise and heat in Millbrae and further reduce Millbrae's access to the bay. Number five, implement fake grass alternative plantings. Work with outdoor hardware supply to stock drought-tolerant native plants, pollinator plants that work in Millbrae's microclimate and support residents landscaping using these plants. Add a native pollinator habitat planting at every city park to ensure we have food supply and so neighbors can see the plants. Each area could be and adopt a spot location. We have a number six, I think. No. Okay. For six is building code amendment for dual plumbing to use recycled water for toilets in major development. For seven, enhancing life moves program into downtown at night after BART stops running. Loss of business revenue at Safeway and Walgreens. I'm not sure if that's clear to everyone. Everyone knows what that's saying. Number eight, M S A S P site seven becomes the site of an award-winning eco-designed recycled water plant that uses some of that water to become a living museum park, creating food and growing plants for other Millbrae restoration projects, and could also have a small dog park. Number nine, irrigation metering for recycled water distribution. That's legislative. Number 10, onsite solar generation on mixed use and large residential development. A lot of good things. So who would like to pitch their favorites first? Keep it to one. Been sneaking in second and third choices, but important to try to pitch your favorite.
Number three, setting decarbonization goals annually, having measurable and reviews.
Why should we do that?
If it's important and we should always do, it should be a part of everything we do as a city government.
Part of what we're doing here is selling each other.
Yeah.
So when you put your thing up there, you want everybody to put theirs also.
Yes.
Who would like to go next?
Boy, we're a quiet group.
Still tired from Saturday.
Number five is actually an ongoing because we've got a lobbyist working on artificial turf, and in fact, it's coming to council city manager in a couple of weeks, but the legislation is moving through. Obviously, I'm for trees, but I'm also the city's representative on the airport roundtable, and I did read their EIR for sea level rise. And I think, like all of SFO's environmental impact reports, they talk about construction but not ongoing operations or after operations. And in their plan for sea level rise, they're going to build nine-foot wall around it, five feet thick, and that's going to reflect noise back into Millbrae, Burlingame, San Bruno, Hillsborough. And in that, they're also going to fill five acres of mud flats. Now, for any of us working in the environmental field, you would know that filling San Francisco Bay has been taboo for decades after filling up 80% of mud flats and salt marshes, which is where our oxygen comes from and where our pollution gets treated. So San Francisco, in their current plan, is filling five acres of mud flats just between runway 28 and Millbrae, and another up to 20 acres of mud flats on the other side. That also, what they're going to do is put more roads out there, more runways out there, more inert surfaces. And I know this is science, folks, but the harder the surface, the more the sound bounces on that. San Francisco is going to bring the final EIR with comments, two comments, and I made comments, the city of Millbrae made comments. Sadly, One Shoreline's comment said, "We want to continue working with you." One page, that's pretty much what it said. So we're kind of on our own to keep an eye on SFO and what's happening out there, and that there are nature-based solutions that can actually absorb the sound. So that I'm pitching for. Number four, we need to have staff time to do a proper analysis when the new final draft comes from SFO.
I don't think, I think you all are all aware, and just to remind all of the council members today, as you vote, keep in mind time, staff, and money. All of those things are necessary to create and grow on the board. Who else would like to speak?
I'd like to advocate for number 10, which is the onsite solar generation on mixed use and large residential development. I think as we're really moving towards electrification and decarbonization, and we're also aware of, you know, maxing out the grid, the more we can be self-sustainable and increasing that solar generation here locally, I think it's better for our residents, better for our city, and better for our environment.
So I put in a few items here. I think number six is the previous goal that I put in the year before. I put in also number nine, number 10. Thank you for the advocacy there, Ms. Haylen. So let me just kind of maybe perhaps give a little brief summary as to how they are, you know, operable with each other. Number six and number nine really come together. What is this is that number nine is, and some of the major metropolitan jurisdictions has already begun doing so, is to require major new mixed use in residential developments to put in a separate meter for future recycled water. And that meter would be able to tie into toilet flushing, for example, irrigation, and fire sprinklers, so that our valuable resources, drinking water, will not be wasted on water that is not going to go into our stomach. Now, having those legislative actions being done to require future development, to have these preparation, well, number one, it's a very limited resources on our side. It's just a legislative actions. You know, it's very limited budgetary impact, but at the same time enable us to really make some headway on preserving the use of valuable natural resources, drinking water. And then at the same time, being able to create the demand for the recycled water that we all know we need to produce. So I think that's definitely a step in the right direction when it comes to environmental stewardship. Number two, the onsite solar generation. I'm also on the executive board of Peninsula Clean Energy, where we're spending a lot of time and effort on decarbonization and pushing for greater solar access on all these major developments, and also battery storage for power resilience. We need to work with major power generation jurisdictions like PCE to push for a greater power resiliency throughout our community on some of these major developments. They really can put in sufficient solar panel to achieve net zero, at least in common area, and battery storage so that they have those resiliencies as we move forward to getting rid of the reliance on fossil fuel.
You and Gina?
Yeah, just for clarification here, I thought the life moves. Other area. Okay, good. Thank you very much. So. We're talking about number four. Climate change action. I would like to see done, updated more regularly so that we can really achieve these goals. So not quite as it's written, but I do appreciate.
I have one public comment slip. Nathan Chan, please join us.
Hello. I do want to address SI 6-4. I'm not entirely sure fighting the plan is necessarily, but I do think it's very important for the city to be engaged. In the EIR, SFO said if they don't get cooperation from Burlingame, Millbrae, and South SF on completing the barrier, they're planning to complete the barrier on their side of the highway, effectively creating a self-contained system. And that is the worst possible outcome for us. Also, I know that in the EIR, they're planning to use their property in Millbrae extensively as a staging area for this project. So this is absolutely something we need to pay attention to, and I think it is something that our city needs to be engaged on, this shoreline protection project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. City Clerk, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, closing public comment.
Shall we continue to vote? You voted, Mr. Fung, better. earlier, all of these things will be revisited as we winnow down. We're going to bring back the original charts of the things that are in progress, the things that didn't have funding from last year. So, four, five, six votes for number one. Two is popular. Three, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 votes for number two. Number three, zero votes. Number four, three. Number eight, two points. Number nine, six points. Number 10, wait, number nine, three points. Over here on the right hiding, if you will. At number 10, we've got one, two, three, six points. So the easiest, of course, is number three, six points. Number four, five points. Number 10, six points. Sorry. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Absolutely right. So sorry. Thank you for checking. Okay. Now, do you want to leave the threes in and just take out? Well, next time, we'll leave the threes in, and you're going to, one of the first things we're going to do when we look at everything is we're going to say, everybody delete one. Maybe a three or, we're going to delete the ones now that have no votes. We'll look at combining and so forth.
I would possibly say yes, except at least looking at number one and two, it relates to strategic initiative number two.
Okay.
So once we get them all lined up.
Anything with points in this case, we'll leave in until our final go-round next time.
I would, Kathy, if I could. For all the tree ordinances, I wrote paragraphs, and I wrote paragraphs to give people a vision, but I do agree that they'll get pared down to something that is doable with staffing and budgets. So I just wanted to give people ideas because last year I put East Side Conception Plan, and nobody knew what that meant. So I took it a step farther on that.
Good.
So since a lot of those are mine, they can be merged and pared down.
Great. Good. And next time, there's a little negotiation that may go along with this, so, in our final meeting. Number four, we can come back to now, which we didn't before. So, I mean, the initiative number four. Number one is two. Number two is four. And keep checking me because I'm not always correct, clearly. Number three is three. Nothing on four, five, six, seven. Number 15, which is out of order because we added it, gets three. Number eight, three. Number nine, two. Number 10, one. Number 11, three. Number 13, five. Number 14, four. Now, my recommendation would to take the one and the two out, leave the rest. Would you all be willing to do that?
Can we see what those are?
Yeah. Number one, got one point. Home buyers assistance program for employees.
I think number nine is actually really good and already reflected in another strategic initiative goal. Is that the one we tried to figure out if it fit or not?
It is not. No.
Okay, so it's not the one that was seven, eight, and a different initiative?
No.
Okay.
Going out that have no votes. We can leave all the others in and just cleaning it. You're going to have another vote, another go-round on this.
Just to be practical, though, we do have to go out to ballot for the fire initiative. So whether it's listed on there, in years past, we did some things we have to do, and going forward with the fire assessment is a has-to-do.
That's number four?
Well, it was.
Five.
Revised number.
So for example, number seven, we'll let, could that actually fit somewhere else? Could that be Brecken Park? Could someone else take on certain things that would not necessarily be a priority of council, but someone could say, hey, this was brought up, we can handle this, budget neutral, or fit somewhere else? Is there a way to leave them there and let our staff actually say, hey, we can take care of some of these low-hanging?
Number three is three. Nothing on four, five, six, seven. Number 15, which is out of order because we added it, gets three. Number eight, three. Number nine, two. Number 10, one. Number 11, three. Number 13, five. Number 14, four. Now, my recommendation would to take the one and the two out, leave the rest. Would you all be willing to do that?
Can we see what those are?
Yeah. Number one, got one point. Home buyers assistance program for employees.
I think number nine is actually really good and already reflected in another strategic initiative goal. Or no, Tom, was that the one we tried to figure out if it fit or not?
It is not, no.
Okay, so it's not the one that was seven, eight, and a different initiative?
No.
Okay.
Going out that have no votes. We can leave all the others in and just cleaning it, you're going to have another vote, another go around on this.
Just to be practical, though, we do have to go out to ballot for the fire initiative. So whether it's listed on there, in years past, we did some things we have to do. And going forward with the fire assessment is a has to do.
That's number four?
Well, it was.
Five.
On revised number.
I apologize. Where, what are you talking about?
Just getting rid of one. With the exception of fires.
It will stay there because it has to.
Yeah. So for example, number seven, we'll let, could that actually fit somewhere else? Could that be Brecken Park? Could someone else take on certain things that would not necessarily be a priority of council? But someone could say, hey, this was brought up, we can handle this. Budget neutral, or fit somewhere else. Is there a way to leave them there and let our staff actually say, hey, we can take care of some of these low hanging fruit?
To be honest, the city manager and I did talk about seven and eight, since those were two of mine, and how we might get our committees to work on that and possibly with the school district.
And six.
So we do have to be aware, we come back to the usual budget, staff, time, that we, all of these things are good. So we are going to have to be preparing forward. Now hopefully, it will take one more meeting to now drill this down to the best 15. So some things will have to go that haven't gone yet. And you all will get the opportunity to vote again, what your favorites are, with the new sheets that will come up before the next one with the things removed that have.
So city manager, can you recommend, we're going to continue today's special city council meeting on goal setting, and you had a suggested date and time. Let's see if all council can be there.
Well, either Monday, the 15th, so one week from yesterday, or one week from this evening, the 16th. The 16th, there is a, there is a B-PAC.
Two not availables on the 15th.
Wednesday, the 17th.
No, what about the 16th? Did everybody, Angie, that is park and rec that night. Quite often, park and rec and/or community enhancement meetings get pushed aside for council. Quite often, that third Tuesday is used for special meetings historically. So Tuesday is a Tuesday a possibility, knowing that it's park and rec?
Tuesday, which day?
16th.
16?
And it depends on what is convenient for the city council to start.
What time are we talking about?
5:00 PM again, if.
Oh, yeah. So the Tuesday night, I'll be flying out for a CalCCA conference the day after, for the day after. Tuesday, I can only meet during the daytime, but not in the evening.
How late in the day would work? What would be the good times?
I'm still working on my flight.
How about, how about?
Anything after 3:00, but probably not at that.
Sounds like Tuesday doesn't work.
How about this Thursday, the 11th?
I have Basque board meeting.
And we have CCAT. Yeah, we have CCAT.
What was about the Wednesday, following Wednesday?
No, there's meetings on Wednesday regarding High Speed Row with our legal counsel, so that.
15?
Would Monday, the 15th, if we did it earlier?
How early?
Somebody said they weren't available.
I've got to appear before the. That means if you're going to do it early in the morning, maybe.
I mean, council, this, I mean, if, I'll just be clear. The city business and getting this done ahead of budget, we're already late. We've been trying to rush through this, and I can't stress enough how I need by law and you need by law to have a balanced budget adopted by July 1st. So we need to narrow this down. We need to identify budgets. Because you may have 15, but I may come back and say, look, based on these priorities, we can only fund three or four. Right? And so the sooner we can get this done, and I recommend making this a priority. And so it's at the pleasure of the city council, but I'll leave it up to you, but I'm.
City manager, we don't typically do this, but we have Friday, a Friday, which is movie night at the rec center. We could go back to meeting at the rec center upstairs in the art room and do it. Would that work?
What about Saturday?
Saturday just requires more staff time?
No, Saturday's fine if, I mean.
Or Saturday.
We're here to work with the council, but I'm just saying if somebody has to go to another council meeting and we can't get this done, I would say if we have a quorum, with all due respect, because we need to be efficient, we need to move this city forward.
But I think that was Monday, but we have two people that can't do Monday.
How about Saturday, the 13th? Is everybody okay?
Monday in the afternoon, what does?
Saturday and 13th is fine with staff. You don't need to worry about that.
Saturday, 10 o'clock, whenever we stopped last time, was it 10 o'clock?
It was 10 to 1 on Saturday.
On purpose of staff. Reasonable hours. Business. Can make it.
How does Monday, Monday afternoon, like 3 to 6, that would get you time to get down to the San Mateo council meeting? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, if I may, so I'll look to Mike Sung. Mike, if we move this to, say, the 22nd, what does that do for you in terms of timeline?
I'd hate to have it go that late.
Yeah, we're offering times.
We're looking at Monday, Tom, this coming Monday.
3 to 6. Friday's afternoon, Friday's good, too.
Friday, that's.
Does that give staff enough time to consolidate? Because I know that the city manager did a lot of work to get the updated slides.
No, no, yeah, I think as long as everyone understands sometimes, you know, we might have a few little adjustments, but we can work through that.
I prefer Friday in case we have to go Monday and then we're set to put it into the next agenda, next council meeting to adopt. So Friday and then a follow up.
Are we talking about Friday to 12?
Yes.
Friday in three days.
At what time Friday are we talking about?
I'm completely open. It's movie night. It means the Leos are.
5 o'clock, I mean, I know.
5 o'clock?
Whatever's convenient for the council. I know you have.
5 o'clock?
Friday at 5?
Kathy, does Friday at 5 work for you? She's saying yes. Friday at 5.
Earlier, could folks do 4?
I have more flexibility in my work schedule than all of you, so I bend to what works for you with your work. 4 o'clock? 4 o'clock? It sounds like 4 o'clock.
Okay.
Maybe staff gets to go home and have dinner with family. And then a backup would be Monday.
I think backup would be Saturday, the 13th.
Backup could be.
Just backup.
Backup could be Saturday, the 13th, except it is.
We pull in all night or two on Friday, so just, you know.
Bring your sleeping bag.
Okay. All right, it is 6:32. We were going to have a hard stop to break for breakfast, but I need to.
Real quick, since we have, if the council are entertaining this, just a quick, I was talking with council member Cahalan earlier today, and I'd like to just appoint a clarification as we prepare for the next meeting. And it has to do with narrowing down the goals under strategic initiative number three. So as you'll note, on the most recent PowerPoint, under SI 3, number one, it's entitled, host at least one district meeting per year to identify localized issues, then report to city council on top issues and how they fit with city goals and commission committee work plans. That received eight points, but that was combined with, and that was old number four on the previous goals. But it became new in number one. But to combine four with seven, eight, and 11, and seven, eight, and 11 on the first round of goals on Saturday. Seven was omni-channel personalized communication with residents. Eight was transparency to the community on timeliness and status of projects. And 11 was collaborative community calendar. And so what we did in narrowing things down, we felt that seven, eight, and 11 could definitely be together. And we moved that to SI 3, number three. Incorporate community engagement through multiple lines of communication, omni-channel, and keep council apprised of timelines and project status. Develop a collaborative community calendar. And so we put six points there, leaving host at least one district meeting per year to identify localized issues, et cetera. Because we just, looking at this, we felt that those should be separated. Combining seven, eight, and 11 into number three, we would implement that in everything that we do. So one is to host district meetings and align what the community says with the city council adopted goals. We would certainly implement our cross-lines of communication, timelines, keep the council appraised, et cetera. So I just wanted to note that, and if that was, just to facilitate Friday night, a little bit quicker discussion, if we can get some feedback from the rest of the council on combining it, keeping it, I would recommend that they don't fit together. They're kind of two different goals. I get that they fit, like one goal would implement, you know, the other goal, we have community engagement, community.
Council, where are you? City manager and I already talked about this one. And, you know, if we did separate them out, I think it's Institute of Local Government has been doing trainings for city councils living now in this new district world. So the district meetings and how to be responsive to districts, but still be a city as a whole, could be part of that.
And we've already had two of those and quite successful, and so that's not a problem. It's just what we do to, for the council to understand how we implement things and have achievable goals, et cetera. So I just, I just thought that those should be separated. But I want to point, and I think maybe council member Cahalan may have some additional input on that.
I just wanted to clarify that they were put out separately. And when we voted on it, it was, and they were combined as four, it wasn't a total of 14 points. It was a total of eight. So just being clear in how we, if we separate them, I don't know if we can really separate the points because people voted on them as a whole. So just for what that's worth from what we did on Saturday to how it's presented here, just so people have that point of clarity.
So, Tom, you're okay? It sounds to me, I'm not seeing a lot. Separate them.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, as we get down to the goals and then we analyze and put budget and utilization to it, a lot of three we do. One, we've already implemented, so it doesn't take a lot of staff time, you know, just coordination with the council member within that district notification. So implementing both of these is not a major thing, such as, you know, climate action plan and, you know, evaluating our baseline for, you know, all the climate variables. So that's why I'm saying is depending on what they are and what we get it down to, some of these we can do. Maybe we can do 20 because we can fit those in. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out for clarification. One and three, under SI 3, is definitely doable with not a lot of additional staff time or budget.
City manager, the vice mayor has a comment, but your comment makes me think that what might help us for this coming Friday, if staff could look at some of these and say, huge effort, minimal effort, maybe that will help us in the process.
Yeah, I think that's a great, great feedback, for sure. And if they're in progress already or if we've done pilots, how could we tweak them? I think, looking at number one, I think the follow-up, how do we disseminate that information to the rest of the council, to the community as a whole, is important. I think when it, the first pilot with District 4, it left a little bit to be desired as far as what do we do next? And how does the community know that it happened and it wasn't just done in a vacuum?
Okay.
And also the budget impact associated with those items.
Yeah.
Anticipated budget impact.
Okay.
Yeah, there's things that the staff will bring back is the original accomplishments with those that are in the works and those that were, there was no funding for. So those that there was no funding, if you're still interested, put those on your vote or put it in the parking lot for one to three years. Up next year. Because as Tom went through all the accomplishments of the year, as you may remember, some were works in progress, some were unfunded.
Okay, so what I need now is a motion to continue the special council meeting goal setting to Friday at 4:00 PM. No end time on that one?
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Papin, second by Fung. Oh, I'm sorry, motion by Cahalan.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The city council continue the meeting to Friday, May 12th to 4:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you.
By vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. And at this point, we have a city council meeting starting in 20 minutes. Hopefully, we can start close to 20 minutes. It's a full agenda. MCTV can make note of that. And for staff and council members, there is some dinner in the city manager's office. So we'll see you all back here in about 18 minutes.